Good evening. Call tonight's meeting of the Washington County Board of Education to order. We do have a quorum present. This evening, we have with us Ella Rowland, a second grade student at Emma K Dowd Elementary School. And Ella is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and Amendment of Silence. Ella?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ella, it's nice to have you with us this evening. Do you have with you some guests that you would like to introduce?
Yes, I do. I have my principal, Mr. Quett. I have my aunt, Cinnamon. I have my mom, and I have my grandma. And also, I have my great uncle Wayne.
Well, I'm glad that you remembered to include your great uncle, because had you not, I would have. So, I noticed that you have something going on there with your arm. What's that about?
I jumped off the swing, and it's fractured.
Is it soon to be off, or?
In three weeks.
In three weeks. So you, I'm guessing, are adventuresome? That's a good word. Do you get in mischief? Are you daring?
We weren't daring. Me and my friend were kind of doing a little thing, or we were trying to fly in the air.
This can happen in school.
Well, Ella, would you like to tell us a little bit about what your schooling is like at Emma K Dowd? Is there anything that you'd like to share with us? Anything you'd like us to know?
Emma K Dowd is actually pretty fun, because I know most of the teachers, because my aunt actually works there. So it's hard to keep, it's hard to not call her Cinnamon. Actually, I have to call her Ms. Rowland, because it's really hard to try and do.
Colleagues, do you have anything that you would like to ask Ella? Great uncle Wayne, is there anything that you'd like to?
Two things. What, so, tell my colleagues what your favorite subjects are at Emma K Dowd.
I like math and music.
And just so everybody is well aware, who's your favorite great uncle?
Is he the only one? Is he the only great uncle?
Well, it depends on how you use great.
We made it relationship-wise.
Well, Ella, we thank you very much for coming out this evening and leading us in the Pledge of Amendment of Silence. And thank you all for being here with us. And you're welcome to stay for the entire meeting, and if you choose not to, that's fine, too. Okay? Thank you so much. Good luck to you back at Emma K Dowd.
Thank you.
First item of business is the approval of tonight's agenda.
Good for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Bigford. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Gessner. All those in favor of approving the agenda? Unanimous? Next item is the approval of the minutes.
Madam President, I move that we approve the closed session minutes dated Tuesday, October 30, 2017.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Bigford. Are there any additions or corrections for those minutes? Am I hearing none? We'll call for the vote. All in favor of approving those minutes? Unanimous? Thank you. Do you have more, Mrs. Murray?
Oh, sorry. Madam President, I move that we approve the minutes of the business meeting dated Tuesday, October 30, 2017.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Bigford. Any additions or corrections? All those in favor of approving those minutes? All right, thank you. Is that it, Mrs. Murray? Thank you very much. You're welcome.
President Williams, would you explain to the audience why they may not be seeing us tonight but hearing us?
Well, that would be due to technical difficulties. We are not going live. We are being taped over here, and my understanding is we will be up on YouTube following the meeting. But due to technical difficulties, we're not live, and you won't see anything up there. I'm hearing from Mr. Wright that when we get to the part of the meeting where there are PowerPoints involved, that those will be displayed on the screen. But for now, we're dark. Thank you, Mr. Gessner. This time, we'll have public comment, and we do have two individuals signed up for public comment. Before I call each of those individuals, I'd like to read from our policy KD, under Procedures, Item 1. Each person wishing to address the Board of Education is encouraged, but not required, to sign up prior to the meeting and may address any topic concerning Washington County Public Schools except personnel or student matters which clearly identify an individual or individuals. Each speaker may speak for up to five minutes. So at this time, the first person on the list is Carol Family. Carol would like to come forward. Would you like to sit over here and hold the table? I think each one of those is all, so pick one. Welcome.
Thank you, President Williams. Board members, and Dr. Michael. My name is Carol Family, and I'm president of the Athletic Booster Club, and also representing the Booster Club and the Smithsburg Athletics. Tonight with me is our A.D., Teresa Bangle. The Athletic Booster Club recently, we recently filled out an application for a partnership in education in order to build a team room, a team building, and a concession stand down at our stadium. Our application is more in detail, but tonight, we just wanted to sort of introduce ourselves, and at the same time, we want to give you sort of an overview. Our concession stand at our stadium right now helps us to raise funds so that we can provide uniforms, we provide equipment, we provide coaching, money for coaches to go to clinics, and we provide a lot of opportunities for our athletes at Smithsburg High School that would not be possible if we didn't raise these funds through our concession stand. However, our current concession stand is in need of repairs. We have plumbing issues, we have flooring issues, and we have a ventilation system that needs upgraded in order to meet the regulations of the Washington County Health Department. We would like to avoid putting more money into this building, since it is a building that really needs replaced. We would let, our stadium sits at the lower grounds of Smithsburg High School, so the gymnasium facilities are up the hill away from our playing field. By putting a team room or a team building down there, it would provide a place to host our visiting teams, it would be a place for our trainer, for referees, and it would be storage, which is much needed, instead of putting little sheds around the facility. So that being said, we are hoping that we can improve our facilities with this partnership in education, and we look forward to working with the staff as we proceed forward in the partnership application. Thank you.
Thank you. Teresa Bangle?
No, I'm just here, I was just here.
You're just here in support?
All right.
Thank you. So, I don't think that anyone else that does not have the opportunity to sign up in advance would like to speak during public comment? This would be the time to come forward? No? All right. Thank you. At this time, we'll have board member response to public comment. Colleagues, is there anything you would like to? Okay, at this time, we'll have the superintendent's report for a part of it.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Tonight, we're excited to have the opportunity to recognize an academic achievement here at Washington County Public Schools. Mr. Justin Bright has been nominated for Maryland to recognize nationally as one of the leading math educators in the nation, and we're very excited about that and very grateful for his work as a math teacher at Boonsborough High School. He has Boonsborough staff with him tonight, as well as supervisor and content specialist that are here supporting. And I'd like to ask that the board members would, if we could, get out front and do what we traditionally do, when we recognize somebody, and I'll read the talk that we have for him.
School, for being named a Maryland finalist for the Presidential Awards for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching Award, Washington County Public Schools and Washington County Board of Education, October 17, 2017. We'd like to recognize you. Congratulations.
Justin, just join the board right there in the middle of the table.
Madam President, I'll continue my report later.
Thank you. Under all business, we have the consideration, the second reading, to rescind policy JEF, I'm sorry, JECF, Adult Admission to the Career Studies Center. Mrs. Fisher?
Mr. Traub.
Mr. Traub.
Good evening. The Board of Education approved the first reading of policy JECF on September 26. This policy, which was adopted in 1977, sets forth a practice that no longer occurs in Washington County Public Schools. The committee was provided an opportunity to offer comments, and new comments were received. The policy committee is recommending the approval of the second reading of this policy and its rescission.
Thank you, Mr. Traub. Mrs. Fisher?
I would like to move to approve the second reading to rescind policy JECF entitled Adult Admission to the Career Studies Center.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Gessner. Discussion? Hearing none. The motion is to approve the second reading to rescind policy JECF entitled Adult Admission to the Career Studies Center. All those in favor? Unanimous? Motion carries? Thank you. Next item of consideration is the second reading to rescind policy JF, Resolution Relative to Student Rights and Responsibilities. Mr. Traub?
During the Board of Education's Public Business Meeting conducted on September 26, they approved rescission of this policy because the content of this policy is already covered under state law and is extensively covered in the student manual that is handed out annually to students and families. No comments were received after the first reading. The policy committee is requesting the approval of the second reading of this policy.
Mrs. Fisher?
I move to approve the second reading to rescind policy JF entitled Resolution Relative to Student Rights and Responsibilities.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Stauffer. Discussion, questions? Seeing none. The vote is on the motion to approve the second reading to rescind policy JF entitled Resolution Relative to Student Rights and Responsibilities. All those in favor? Unanimous? Motion carries? That brings us to a first reading. This is the first reading of proposed changes to policy KC, Public Private Educational Partnerships, Construction Activity.
Thank you. The Board of Education adopted policy KC in 2008. The purpose of this policy is to foster partnerships with the community in an effort to enhance opportunities for students. The policy is currently applied, applies only to construction activities that relate to public-private partnerships. The policy committee wanted to explore whether there was a need to have a new policy that would address public-private partnerships that did not involve construction activities. As they closely examined the current policy, they concluded that voting minor modifications were required to this policy in order that it apply not only to construction activities, but also to programs and other activities. The policy committee is recommending the following action. First, that the title be modified by strengthening the reference to construction activity. Second, if you examine the background clause, you'll note some suggested language that would make it clear that the policy also applies to programs that serve enhanced learning for students. The policy committee is requesting the approval of the first reading of policy KC.
Mrs. Fisher?
Madam President, I move to approve the first reading of proposed changes to policy KC, which is entitled Public Private Educational Partnerships, Construction Activity.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Gessner. Discussion, questions? Seeing none, we call for the vote. The vote is to approve the first reading of proposed changes to policy KC entitled Public Private Educational Partnerships, Construction Activity. Unanimous? Motion carries? Thank you, Mr. Traub. Our next item of business is the consideration of the revised Washington County Board of Education operating norms and the Washington County Board of Education communication processes. In your packets that you received Friday evening, you should have received a copy of each, the operating norms and the communication processes. I understand in talking with Mrs. Fisher before the start of the meeting that we need to make an adjustment to the operating norms? Is that correct?
Yes, number eight.
All right. Number eight. Says differing opinions should be discussed collectively in order to seek resolution. Suggested change? Is that what, I think you presented two, two by email?
Two possibilities. It's a matter of choice of wording.
Okay. You have a preference?
I have no preference, no, thanks.
Colleagues, do you have a preference? I would like to suggest one of the two that Mrs. Fisher put forward. Discuss differing opinions through collective discussion. Would you like to hear that again?
Yes.
Discuss differing opinions through collective discussion.
That's not choice. You very nearly correctly wrote that.
Did I write it incorrectly on my note?
Yes, choices are either discuss differing opinions collectively in order to seek resolution, or seek resolution to differing opinions through collective discussion.
You took the first half of one and the second half of the other. I'm sorry, was that?
You have to overshoot it.
I have, I think I must have the wrong sheet. Okay. So, again, we want discuss differing opinions collectively in order to seek resolution? Is that the preference?
Okay.
So we want to take these one at a time. The first motion would be to approve our operating norms. Madam President, I move to approve the revised Washington County Board of Education operating norms. Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Stauffer. Is there any discussion? The vote is to approve the revised Washington County Board of Education operating norms. All those in favor? Seven to zero. Motion passes. And our second motion should be to approve the Washington County Board of Education Communication Processes. Is there a motion?
Madam President, I move to approve the revised Washington County Board of Education Communication Processes.
Thank you, Mr. Bigford. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Stauffer. Discussion? Questions? Right, so the vote is to approve the revised Communication Processes. All in favor? Thank you. The vote is unanimous? Motion carries? That brings us to the consideration of construction documents for the urban educational campus, the Board of Education component. Mr. Prue, Chief Operating Officer.
Robert Collins, Director of Facilities Planning and Development.
Thank you.
Agent President Williams, Chairman of the Board, Dr. Michael. It's our pleasure this evening to present to you the construction documents for the urban educational campus, BOE component. Those actual construction documents have been in the board office for the last week for you to review at your pleasure. At my view, those documents will look similar to the design documents that you approved just several meetings ago. This is the final approval to send the documents off to MSD for final approval by the State Superintendent. We're hearing that last Tuesday, the Board of County Commissioners approved these documents at a review by the ARS-PRC committee, and with their commentary, and with that, we would accept any questions you may have.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I move to approve construction documents for the urban educational campus of BOE component.
Thank you, Mr. Stauffer. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Bigford. Questions, discussions?
I guess I'm, well, if all goes well, when will construction start? Or at least, when will activity begin?
Well, our kind of writing joke has been, we'll start on January 1st with a new year party, but I don't think the public group will agree with that. Our hope is early in January that we'll see demo of the old building and start to occur. And it's going to take several months for that demolition work, so I anticipate late spring, early summer, we can see the construction. We're opening in August of 2018.
Any other question? Any other discussion? Okay, the motion is to approve the construction documents for the urban educational campus, the BOE component. All those in favor? Unanimous? Motion carries? Thank you. And the rest of your reports?
All right, a number of reports this evening. Healthcare is obviously an ongoing topic for Washington County Public Schools. It's a big second item for the school system. I refer $30 million of our budgets committed to the healthcare costs, as well as it's a cost to our employees, as well as a benefit to our employees. And we want to make sure we keep the board updated on this. We have to make a report every two, three months, so we have new information, but at least quarterly. We'll report on the progress of the healthcare balance, things that we're seeing that are happening in the healthcare field, predictions for next year, those types of things, as that information becomes available. Tonight, we just have a brief report, which is kind of bring you up to speed on some things that occurred last year, and a little bit of so far good news for the first quarter of our healthcare year. So, that, Mr. Prue?
Thank you, Dr. Michael. As members of the board, as Dr. Michael indicated, we were here, I believe, back in August, and gave you an update on where we were in terms of where the insurance fund was. About a week ago, week and a half ago, we actually had an internal meeting, staff members with members of Cigna, which is our medical insurance provider, as well as Paul Partners, who is our contractor, to review the data from FY17. We're going to share some of that data with you tonight to give you a sense of what is going on inside of our plan, what are some of the items that are driving costs. We looked at these things at the really at the 10,000, 30,000 foot level, to get a sense of where came we made some changes, if we made, potentially making recommendations further at later times. And Ms. Keller is going to walk you through some of the hardcore data, and then we'll talk to you a little bit about the fund at the very end.
So I want to preface this slide by saying, actually, in this whole report, by saying, anything that I'm talking about is mostly dealing with employees, dependents, and retirees who are non-Medicare. We're not looking, for purposes of this evening, we're not looking at anybody that is Medicare, which is the majority of our retirees. Also, anything that I'm going to discuss is medical and prescription only. I think Mr. Prue, when he addresses some items, it will be our whole fund, but for me, I'm going to look at just medical and prescription costs. For purposes of this slide, the base period is FY16, the current is FY17, and the norm is Cigna's book of business in their K through 12 market. So that's a nationwide, it's a nationwide book. It's something to, just take it for what it's worth. I mean, their K through 12 business could be something that's closer to the metropolitan area, it could be very rural, it's just kind of something to base it on. Remember, per year, we're looking at about 6,400 numbers, so keep that in mind as well. But you can see that our base and current periods, of course, nothing new to us, that our employer, Washington County Public Schools, is paying a bulk of the costs for our medical claims. Employees are paying about 5.5% on average of actual bills, and that's pharmacy and medical combined. We are actually paying a little less than the norm, but overall, I think we're where we should be. Norm-wise, I think employees actually compared to Cigna's book of business are paying about This graph is not shocking to anybody who is normally, can normally look at this data, but for people that have not seen this before, it can look a little... but for people that have not seen this before, it can look a little bit hidden, eye opener. What this shows, and I'm going to concentrate on the box on the bottom, 20% of our claim, the top 20% of our claimants is what's actually driving 79% of our costs. And that's pretty significant. It is really not out of the norm. You usually do see that the sickest people do have the bulk of the claims. $32.5 million are going to about 1,400 people on average. This was last plan year. It is about this every plan year, so it's not, didn't have shocking numbers this year. But it does just give you a little indication that, you know, just a small amount of our numbers are what's driving a lot of the cost. Before we get into this specific diagnosis data here, I do just want to mention that this information is not being presented as a way to seek the people or a group of people out anyway. The intent is not to make people feel bad that they happen to fall into any of these categories or that they have any of these diagnoses. We just want to know and let you know where the dollars are going and why. We need to know this so that we can be forward with the focus of helping employees get healthier through education and also steering wellness efforts to concentrate on those that need it the most. So I just wanted to preface that before we get into some of these diagnoses. Really know how to be forward to keep claims low and get people healthier by knowing where this data is. So, looking at this slide, we're looking at catastrophic spend. Catastrophic spend is anything that's individuals that have over $100,000 in claims that go to a pharmacy and that plan. Catastrophic spend accounted for about 22% of our overall spend for the last year. And 80%, 87% of catastrophic claimants had at least one chronic episode. We'll talk about chronic here in a second. But our top catastrophic diagnoses were neoplasms, which is different types of cancers, musculoskeletal, and circulatory. Accompanying the catastrophic illnesses are chronic illnesses. Here we can see that on the top 10 chronic ongoing conditions, they accounted for 19% of medical and prescription plan spend. Diabetes is the top chronic condition that we experience here with our employees and dependents. Moving on to pharmacy, we do see that our pharmacy is 23.7% of our total spend. $1 out of every four to 25% of our pharmacy spend goes directly towards diabetes drugs and also anti-inflammatory. We have a really high generic usage. We do have, our generic usage is at 86%. That's significant because if you go down two bullet points, you can see that if you have a 1% increase in generic utilization, it can reduce our claim cost by about $364,000 a year. So having a high generic usage is pretty key to keeping our claims as low as we can. Brand drugs represent about 15% of our volume, but account for a very large percent of our costs, 68%. So that just shows you a little bit of how expensive brand drugs can be that we don't see as employees, you know, when we're paying our co-pay for.
And I think if I can chime in, Gina, what's key for folks in terms of understanding the difference between generics and brands is the active ingredients in the generic drug are the same as they are in the brand drug. The difference is in the binders that are holding that drug together. So there really is, in terms of its use, there is no different result from generic to brand, where a patient may receive a different benefit, maybe potential side effect in the binder, but the active ingredients are exactly the same to become a generic and brand.
One of the things that I would like to point out is for specialty medicines. And specialty medicines, it shows here on this slide, 31% of our pharmacy spend. Specialty medicines is something that's going to continue to be, not just here, but nationwide, an issue. Specialty meds are ones that are biologics, which means they require some type of special care or they have complex makeups. A lot of times, they are infusible infusion drugs or injectable drugs. For us, our infusion drugs and injectable drugs are paid under our medical plan, not necessarily our pharmacy plan, but we do have pharmacy spend of specialty drugs that are oral-based. They're very high cost. To give a little background, specialty meds, in 1990, there were about 10 specialty meds total on the market. Now there's over 300, and they can range in price anywhere up to $300,000 a month. And we've experienced some of those. 10 years ago, specialty meds accounted for about 19% of pharmacy spend in the U.S. They expect in about 10 years, it is going to rise to 50%. So there's really no, you know, we've heard different things about the EpiPen and how we manufacturers are really pushing costs up just because they can. And there's no legislation on that yet, so it's going to continue to happen until the government, I think, steps in and does something. But this is something that is a point of, very big point of interest for us that we have to figure out how to get it handled on.
Last few slides, I'm going to share where we are, where we are really with the self-insurement fund. The chart in front of you, the one to the left is comparing quarter one of 2017 versus quarter one of 2018, which you'll find is that expenses while up over the, or excuse me, are roughly relatively flat, actually decreased, excuse me, decreased half of, if I look at the red line, decreased about a half a million dollars for the current year. What we're seeing is an increase in income is the 25% increase we applied to premiums this year. And the fund is responding in the way which we intended, where we looked at a loss of $1.8 million during the last fiscal year in the first quarter. This year, we're a profit of $1.5 million. That is exactly what was intended to get us back to a fund balance of approximately $3 million in the insurance fund. The chart to the right shares with you really our weekly spend. To give you a comparison, during the first six months of FY '16, '17, and '18, you can see that we went from $727,000 to $850,000, and we've rolled back to about $831,000 per week of spend coming out of the self-insurement fund. And then the last slide, just to give you a sense of where the fund resides as of September 30th. So when we started the year on July 1st, we were at a deficit balance in the insurance fund of $4.1 million. You see here the revenue over expense number from the first quarter of $1.5 million, and a final ending fund balance right now of $2.5 million in the whole. One point we want to clearly make is one quarter is not a trend. You know, the plan is responding the way we expected it to with our increasing premiums. If things go the way the first quarter is going, we could expect that we may have a profit in the fund balance by the end of the year and maybe even minimize premiums for the coming year, but it really is too early to tell. I think by the time we get the end of quarter two, which is December 31st, we'll have a better feel of where we may be, especially if our claims continue to burn. And with that, we'll be happy to take any questions you have.
Thank you, Mr. Prue. Colleagues, questions?
So, you said you weren't really shocked by any of the figures, but is there anything in the data that explains how we spent down so much of our funds that we ran it up in the red? Like with the abnormal number of cancer patients, or?
We did experience a larger amount of cancer patients. I don't want to say abnormal, but larger than we had in the past. We also had some increased emergency room usage, but that seemed to be better for this past plan year. Catastrophic claimants, I think, just people hitting that stock loss. We experienced more people hitting their stock loss quicker. And there were a few drugs in particular that are being paid under a medical plan that we didn't experience. People weren't on those particular drugs before, and they're pretty high cost. So that was something that was not in our norm. That coupled with, you know, we had a few years where we didn't increase premiums as much as our trends were increasing because our fund balance was so high, and then we got caught with a really bad year, and there's this negative impact.
So, I guess what I'm getting at is, do we feel like last year was, again, I'll use the word abnormal, or is this going to be, is there any way of telling whether this will continue?
I think if you may recall, I think the presentation Mr. South gave at the early part of this calendar year, it's not uncommon that within our fund, we've seen what I'll call cyclical bumps in terms of the claims increase. And so I think Mr. South indicated that that was the impression he had for the past, the past plan year, was that we were having high cost, but it was not the first time we had seen that, and that they ebb and flow. So we did start seeing a decrease in claim cost at the end of FY '17, and that's continuing into FY '18. So at this point, it looks like Mr. South made the decision and was reading the TLEs appropriately, and I think that may be a thing.
And can you just give, I knew what neoplasms were, but could you give some common conditions for like musculoskeletal and circulatory?
Musculoskeletal would be arthritis, anything dealing with the joints or bones and things like that. Circulatory is definitely anything heart-related or blood-related.
Okay. So it's not, yeah, I was actually doing some research into like a hip replacement. You're like $45,000 if you didn't have insurance, but so it's chronic conditions like arthritis?
I think the claims significantly increase, especially as members realize multiple chronic conditions. So an employee who may have five or more chronic conditions, we could expect that the claim that the fund will realize expenses of around $32,000 per year for that one member if they have five or more chronic conditions. So Cigna is a huge proponent of wellness activities and engaging employees and members with their primary care physician to attack overall wellness and to manage the chronic conditions in a way that we don't let them get out of control and which then lead to a lot of health costs.
And was that your biggest takeaway from the meeting with Cigna? Anything that you came away with that surprised you or answered any questions you have?
Well, I will say that Cigna is very good and very detailed and very informative. When they come, they bring a team of people. They bring a pharmacy specialist, they bring a wellness person, they bring a team of people, and they all know our claims, in and out. They were very informed, they were, they could answer any question we had. The amount of data they gave, what we gave is a snapshot tonight. The amount of data they gave, we're still going through it, still pouring through it, just finding different things. I don't know there was anything that stood out as, oh, this is a huge concern, but I do know that some of the, they did give us some recommendations. Some of the recommendations they said was just educate your members. We've got these, we've got things, we've got programs in place, we've got free coaching. They can call in and talk to a wellness coach or a health coach anytime about any type of condition they have. Make sure your people understand that. So we're going to work with them on getting that information out to people and making sure they understand how to use it and the impact that it can have long-term. I think that's what we need to focus on is long-term, not a short-term fix. It's something, okay, how do we get our people healthier, period? And that's going to do well, not only for health insurance claims, but for attendance in the classroom. And it's just, it's, that's what we need to do.
And let's hope all the work you've been doing, going out to the schools and educating already, that's you, correct?
Yes.
I hope that's had some impact and certainly seems like it's worked.
I think what we hear from staff is that they didn't understand, they just assumed Cigna was paying claims. And that's not how we operate this self-insurement plan.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Stauffer?
I've just always been curious, and that's really often to do, I guess, with this discussion tonight, because the president signed an executive order the other day, and I don't know what it does to Obamacare and all that type of thing, but under that, was that plan ever considered a Cadillac plan? Would it have been under that tax that was supposed to come, last, it was supposed to be 2020 or something like that now?
Right, it's been one of those things that's been put off and delayed until 2020. We probably were right on the border. I mean, we've got a very strong plan. If you compare our plans to the plans that are on the marketplace, they give a metal, you know, gold, you know, gold, silver. Ours is the top of the, top six tier where our plan is structured now. We, if the Cadillac tax does come to fruition, we will seriously need to look at our plan design to make sure that we are not over that limit. It's very, I think it's hard because they want to tax you, or I don't want to say tax you, they want to penalize employers for giving a plan that's too rich, but at the same time, they want to penalize you for giving one that's not, not good enough, too. It's really going to be, you know, it's hard to find that right balance.
I was just always curious where you fell with that. How would that have affected the average person, I mean, in the plan? I mean, what would they have been responsible for?
It's more of a, it's more on the employer than it is on the employee. But they, it's more of a cost-sharing piece. You're getting a better benefit, so you're going to pay for a better benefit.
All right, I just wanted to share this about that.
Thank you very much.
I have gone back and certainly the finance committee for the fall, there were updates, and we obviously have updates for the board. Our next report will be pretty to residential updates. There's a lot of detail in the PowerPoint this evening. I would ask Mr. Chris Bell just to do kind of an overarching view of this. This does not represent every development that we have in Washington County. These are just the more recent developments we have in Washington County to some degree. The educational master plan has an outline by a high school area group that shows active developments. At one time, the county had a blue dot map component, actually had different colored dots on it, but it was tracking over 100 developments, I think, is how I recall the dots on that. So right now, while housing starts are fairly low, these are all very speculative in type of projects for most of our, you know, a lot of the ones we have in the educational master plan. So, Champ, if you would, just give us a brief overview and then certainly respond to any other questions.
Well, I think just to, before we begin, just to expand upon Dr. Michael's comments, we review claim developments and changes in claim developments during our regular facilities committee meetings, and the members of that committee asked for an update, I thought, for, I see some updates. So Mr. Chris Bell's put this together, and so that caveat is ahead of you.
So every May, we bring an educational facility master plan to the board. This is kind of like a nice mid-year review of some of the changes we've seen since we presented the document to you back in May. In that document, we include community analysis, what we do, as Dr. Michael mentioned, list all the major subdivisions within a high school service area. We give the elementary and middle schools that they could potentially impact. And then we also do the enrollment projections. Throughout the year, of course, we get changes to developments, we get new developments, and developments that we continually update the facility committee about. We provide comments back to planning city, even town municipality staff when those developments come in. When we get to about January, we start really reviewing where we are, where those numbers have changed. We might get multiple letters of developments throughout the year. We take that information, roll it up the roll projections. We also use that in the educational facility master plan that we're going to present to the upcoming May. Basically, from that time all the way through May, we will add as things come in, but pretty much what you see in May is the final, what we do to be best right around ending in March or so. So the document you would see in the educational facility master plan would list the developments. It tells you how many tools, possible units could be in that development that we know about. They're listed in concept phase, and then as they move through the process, they'll certainly get permits, and then they will be able to get permits, but they just have permits. So trying to explain that process and how it impacts the number of students we see in school is a developer purchases a partial plan, he'll submit a concept, like, I don't want to submit this many homes. As he moves through, he gets a little more serious, he gets some more drawings. He goes through state highway, he goes through stormwater, submits a preliminary plan. After that happens, then he comes in with a final plan, and when he gets the final plan approval, basically, he can come in and get permits at any time. As I mentioned, that's basically how we try to track where the development is in the process. So since this past May, we've had a couple of very minor adjustments, one to two home differences. Such as what farm or what they submit is actually two less than what we showed you in the educational facility master plan. These have very little effect to the number of students we could potentially see. It's less than one student overall, very minor. From Clary Hill, it was a one less unit than what they originally stated they would. Those at Gateway was exactly consistent. It just moved from the concept phase into a full-blown plan phase. And then Paradise Heights came in with one more, again, less than a student different. However, we did get a couple of developments this year that were a little bit larger. We had a change to the existing Rosewood Village development, which was in the educational facility master plan. facility master plan and had final fire approval. They, they went back, they took a step backwards, they went to the concept phase and they submitted a plan for thirty-six additional apartments. And then they decided to change twenty-six townhomes into single family dwellings. Hopeful Station was a new apartment complex, we saw it over in Williamsport High School Service Area. Cherry Hill came in with a new apartment complex. That was something new that was not in the educational facility master plan. They're looking at thirty-six new apartment buildings. Westfields added twenty additional units. Basically, they changed twenty single family homes into twenty duplex homes, so almost the total number of dwelling units of Westfield. And then Burghans Village, as a new development came in the city, in fact, it was at the location of the former Deerfield Knolls Plan development, which about three educational facility master plans ago was shown in a concept phase and died, went off and now it's kind of resurrected as this new development. So what does this all mean? That's kind of what we want to get to. The total number of students that we could see increased in our enrollment projection somewhere in the next two to ten years for the elementary level could be about seventy-two students, for the middle school level could be about thirty-one students, and for the high school level could be about thirty-five units. Now, being that we still have several months between now and January and February when we start to re-review this with county and city municipality staff, these numbers could still change and we'll continue to update the facility committee as we do get additional letters in, but we are seeing some bump in growth. Now, that doesn't mean that instantly next year's, in two years, the enrollment numbers are going to jump by seven at Eastern Elementary. We're going to look at the kindergarten classes that are coming in, we're going to look at migration patterns, we're going to look at the GIS data that we have from Gravenbroe Primary School. There's a lot of things that we will take into account as we work with our demographer, Public Pathways Incorporated, in incorporating these, these potential changes due to development activity. We'll also talk to the county and the city to find out how serious these developments are. Sometimes we'll see changes come in and then a month later, we get another letter saying they're going in a different direction because they feel as if something has changed. The other thing we do is, as the, okay, another thing we do is we talk to the county, if the slide's not coming up, but about potential developments. So we also saw some of the articles in Cloverley Hill. I attended meetings in Smithsburg last Tuesday night, got some information there, that's something that we're going to keep an eye on. Nothing has been formally submitted to anyone, but currently just looking at the potential of an annexation request to the county of Smithsburg. Hager's Crossing is showing some additional increase, increase in activity. A new developer is looking at basically coming in to build the remaining two-hundred-and-eighteen homes out there. Now, nothing's, they've just had some preliminary discussions with the city, but much as the city and the county knows, they contacted me right away to let me know this, these discussions we're talking. Nothing's been submitted, but we'll continue to monitor it because it could have an impact on enrollment at Jonathan Hager Elementary School. And then Senate Ridge Apartments, we obviously are following that very closely, that's in the Morgueville, Western Heights, North Hagerstown High, intended zone. Keeping close eye on the number of students that are coming out of there and how that could potentially impact Morgueville or other adjacent schools next to Jonathan Hager. So when we come back with the educational facility master plan this year, we may know whether or not we need to have some initial discussions on the potential of an addition for Jonathan Hager or not, you know, to look at these developments. So with that, I'll stop, I apologize for the slide and I'm broken.
Have a good, questions? Mr. Stelford?
Of course, the Senate Ridge Apartment Complex.
That is located, I apologize, like, it's a lot of information to remember at times. Senate Ridge...
And we've talked about a lot of these in facilities committee, but I don't remember that.
Okay, so Senate Ridge is okay, it's in the Morgueville Elementary and intended zone. If you're driving up eighty-one, as you get past the apartment there on the left, if you're heading north, you can look over just past that tree line, you'll see a bunch of apartments there. It was just added to that existing development. So that opened last, it was, it was just before the end of school. Started tracking the number of students who were coming out, I was running weekly reports. I tracked it all through the summer. It started off with about eight to ten kids coming out of there, like, after the first two months that it was open. It's now up to twenty total students coming out of that apartment complex, which is about a hundred-and-twenty apartments. The number of students coming out of there right now is twenty total, ten elementary students, and I can't, I can't remember the exact middle of the high school numbers, but we're watching it to see if it's going to become, like, the apartments at Collegiate Acres, where we don't have a lot of students coming out of them, or if it's going to become like Portland Apartments, where we have a lot of students coming out of them. We want to try to be able to know right up front if it's going to be a Portland or if it's going to be kind of a Collegiate Acres, so.
Are they the same owners, Champ?
Not, Portland and Senate Ridge, I believe, are on the same owners, I believe.
And Washington here, of course.
Yes, sir.
And I think one of the ways that you can get an idea will be finding out what the rents are. It'll tell you a lot.
It's fairly similar.
Yeah, if rents are similar, then you're looking at, you're looking at the same thing.
The only thing that's different is that the Portland Apartments are located kind of a little bit closer to some amenities, like, you know, shopping center and some food places, but the Senate Ridge Apartments are located closer to the Highland. So it's, it's hard to say which way it may go.
I think, you know, Champ, I think more importantly is how much does it cost? I mean, you really do, I think you're right about the amenities, Portland is opposite of Washington, but, you know, I don't think that's what is driven corporate apartments to, to fill as quickly as they did and gives them all the kids that they did, you know, and I think the bond lies is more.
I think so.
Peter Krasinski?
Just, when I saw, it's south high on capacity?
Yes.
Okay, but none of these are too shocking to be of concern yet.
I think the big thing we need to continue to watch is, Mr. Chris will indicate, you know, a lot of things go into our growth other than just housing. Housing was a big driving force there in the mid-two thousands, inserting birth rates and things like that. Our birth rate is down, our kindergarten is down compared to our fifth grade. Mr. Chris, I think we're looking at eighteen-hundred and some children in fifth grade and fifteen-hundred and some children in kindergarten. So birth rate drives a lot of our growth right now, a lot of housing's low. Housing picks up like it did in the mid-two thousands before the housing market crashed, we suddenly can see influxes in migrations, what Mr. Chris referred to. So it's one of those things to watch. It seemed like it happened all at once, when it happened in the mid-two thousands and it shut off all at once. And it hasn't changed much now, birth rate's actually declining over the years. That's why it's very difficult to predict and we're trying to, you know, we have to plan out four to five years out with our buildings and things like that. So Jonathan Hager's a perfect example. We'll trigger on fourth and fifth, fourth and fifth round of Jonathan Hager with anticipation of two-hundred-and-eighteen more units there in that development. And we're, Clary Hill, that's going to actually be in the Jonathan Hager district, or will not produce as many students as we think, or will not build out as fast as we think. It's all just very, it's scientific, but it's still a guess.
And with this, I'm bringing you what we're seeing as potential activity, as in the administrative portion of the project. And this is about tripled, is what we've seen in the past several years with development activity, you know, concept plans, preliminary plans coming across to the counties and municipalities. I believe that is why Mr. Guesford wanted us to present this to the board, to kind of say, hey, we're seeing, we're seeing some signs, but, but nothing's actually turned into dirt yet. And it's just a good thing that you guys know that we are keeping a very close eye.
I think we're seeing a lot of positions and it's just a matter of, does it happen where it takes off, how fast it takes off, which developments take away.
That would be my question, and looking at this, the one that immediately raised my level of concern was the Hager's Crossing, when we see the potential for two-hundred-and-eighteen, and then just wondering, you know, what kind of time period we're looking at in terms of how long it would take to, to build that out, or even to build out enough that it would impact Jonathan Hager, so.
That's been shown in our educational facility master plan, is in concept phase for the last several years.
So it's just watching and monitoring to see?
And what has to occur for that to happen is they have to make a connection to McDavid Road. So when you currently go up, you drive around a circle of seven ones straight to the school, you make a left. They have to extend that road all the way out to McDavid before they can build any of those two-hundred-and-eighteen homes. They also are probably going to have to do some work to the existing McDavid Road and some of the other roads for the public facility owners to get it up to the amount of traffic that they'll be adding to it. And that's something that the city has been working with, asked developer, and he, at the time of the economy, said, it's not worth it for me to, they spent all that capital for what I'm going to get back in such homes as the market was down. As we see the market starting to come back up, we're starting to see people test the waters, to see what they may or may not have to do, put figures together, submit ideas. Nothing on this one yet, but that's, that's why I heard about it from the city, is, hey, there's, there's possible interest.
Mr. Chris, off the top of your head, do you know how many more houses can be built at Westfields? And it's still in the hundreds, so not.
So, I don't, I don't find it.
About two-hundred-and-forty-four are still in concept phase after the last educational facility master plan check. There's an additional one-hundred-and-seven that were without permit, but I know they've gotten a bunch of permits, I do not know the new number, so it's somewhere, I'm going to say around three-hundred or so. So just, just for, you know, for the sake of understanding what's happening, at Westfields, there's already infrastructure, sewer, water, main roads, they're all stuffed out, you've seen that build towards the school, build back out to the other entranceway, now it's starting to go around the school. It'll completely surround the school with houses when Westfields go out. So that's a development that most likely will either continue to build slow, you know, twenty-five, thirty houses a year, or in a housing boom, it's positioned probably to build as fast as houses could go.
And that's wonderful. And that feeds into which, middle and which types of picks and sell out.
Yes, ma'am.
So those are the things we keep an eye on. At, at one time, that, well, I know times get longer, but one time that development would have been completely built out like four or five years ago, based on the schedule, they actually held them back. They started sixty cars a year and I think it increased to a hundred, and they were building as fast as the county could let it build them, so they had them held back. And all of a sudden, we just had a housing crash and then you had houses in the back. So all those things, again, just make this very complicated.
Talk about Jonathan Hager, that would be, I don't only have to extend out to McDavid Road, but you have to do something about Park Four also, which parallels all that. That road's not ready to.
Right. I'd have to defer to the county on that and the city, that's, that's their expertise, like, you know, I know the McDavid connection was the big one, but you're correct, I would imagine there would be some additional repairs needed.
That road would not set up to take that.
City's going to be more inclined to be flexible, maybe, in the county. They could use, they could use some tax base, it makes sense. Westfields is, they'll exclude it somewhere. That wouldn't be, you're exactly right, that's the one that's ready to start. Yeah, they're building now, pretty decent clip, but it's, you know, it's, it's a, it's a spot for a spot for new homes, like, that's where a lot of people are looking, still close to the interstate.
Any discussion?
Where's the county now as far as a mitigation? What are they charging as far as fees, other than flying schools?
They have an alternate mitigation contribution formula that is assessed when a development comes in, in the school, I believe, I believe it's under a hundred-and-twenty percent, I do not posit it might be a hundred, and it's either local rate of capacity or state rate of capacity. We really don't pay to involve in the assessment of mitigation fees, other than I provide quarterly enrollments, as required to do. We provide pupil generation rates, which is where we look at the developments, the number of students are generating per dwelling type, and we provide that. And then every time I see a development come in, the facility committee knows, it's a pretty long letter that I sent out and it goes to Mr. Goodrich, so he knows to check it, to make sure it's been checked for mitigation payments and everything else. That's kind of the last stop, to make sure that nothing slips through the cracks.
They reduce those amounts over the last ten years, I guess, I would think.
I think as the housing market dropped off, they're trying to, trying not to have the ATF idea discouraging development right now, but again, it's where we want our partners in the county to be constantly watching this, and it's why we need to keep up on maintenance projects, renovations of older schools right now, because the day will come, much like it came before. Vester Elementary got pushed back over ten years as we went through that housing, but we had to provide seats and unfortunately, Vester suffered, it was only that for ten years until we got the development. Thank you, gentlemen. Your next report.
Thank you for the positive job you're doing, keeping up with all of this and keeping your fingers in the polls.
Final report, Stephen, ACT and SAT results are fairly factual, important, we do this fairly quickly, we have staff here to respond to any questions. That I'll turn over to you. Or you take the lead?
Thanks.
Go ahead and introduce your, your teammates there, because I want the board to understand who are, who aren't here yet.
This is Nicole Marshall, she's the content specialist for High School Mathematics and Amanda Laydie, she's the content specialist for English Language Arts in high school. And we are here this evening to present the ACT and SAT data for twenty sixteen to seventeen.
Bring a late reaction or a spontaneous reaction.
This first chart is for ACT, this compares the senior test takers for ACTs with the number of graduate class students that we have. So in twenty seventeen, we have nine-point-nine percent of our seniors participating in the ACT, that was one-hundred-and-fifty-six students. We don't have the graduating class yet for Maryland to do the comparison for twenty seventeen. The ACT is divided into four parts, English, reading, math, science, and then a composite. This is on a thirty-six total point maximum, and this chart shows the data for twenty thirteen to twenty seventeen, so the past five years. We compare to all Maryland schools, so this would be students that are not just enrolled in public schools, as well as national, all student takers, so again, not just public school takers. For twenty seventeen, our average for the English ACT was twenty-one-point-four. And this was the last take, so if students take more than once, this would be the most recent assessment. For reading, our average was twenty-three-point-zero, which is thirty-six. For math, it was twenty-two-point-four. Science, it's twenty-one-point-eight. And then the last slide is for composite for ACT, and this would be twenty-two-point-three, this is the average of all of the four components that make the ACT. For the SAT, in March twenty sixteen, we had the first administration of redesigned SAT. Biggest change was in the English section, it condensed the section from two sections to, that were reading and writing into one, which is evidence-based reading and writing. The math section was also redesigned and realigned. The score range is still at two-hundred to eight-hundred, which it is historically been, and that would be a maximum that students could attain a sixteen-hundred in a composite. For students that tested prior to March twenty sixteen, they concorded the scores, which was they, they chose some of the items and converted them over to the new score system, so that we'd be able to read them directly. For our participation rates, again, this is the, the cohort for senior takers and compared to the number of graduates. We have fifty-five-point-six percent of our SAT, or of our senior class taking the SAT, that was eight-hundred-and-seventy-five students.
Mr. Mardavich, I think in the state, state historically has run sixty-five to seventy percent takers.
Yes.
And then fifteen and sixteen have jumped way up. There are a couple of counties that every student will get SAT.
Correct. So we have some, some counties that take, however, if you look at the, the numbers behind that, in twenty seventeen, we went down for the Maryland all the way from forty-seven-thousand in twenty sixteen to about thirty-eight thousand. So there was a significant decrease last year.
Couple of counties have changed that. I think Baltimore City was one that tested every senior, so that's what.
Eight-four?
I don't know how, us. I don't know how, that's how it jumps from seventy percent to eighty-some percent of Maryland seniors were taking the SAT, so. I'm not clear. But it's a change that in fact, we'll be checking that out.
So again, we compare ourselves with Maryland all and the national all. Because this is the first year of the data, we only have twenty-seventeen data. So our average, again, the scores are from two-hundred to eight-hundred, and this is also the last take. So if students took the SAT more than once, they would only reflect the last take that they had. Our average for the evidence-based reading and writing is five-hundred-and-forty-one. For math, similar, five-hundred-and-forty. And then the composite for SAT, we add the two scores together, so that is one-thousand-eighty-one for the composite.
So speaking a little to our preparation for students for SAT and ACT, as Maureen said, that in twenty sixteen, the SAT redesigned and aligned themselves with Common Core. And so with full implementation of the WCPS essential curriculum with integrity, we use Maryland College Career Writing Standards, which are Common Core, so we are naturally teaching and preparing our students for the SAT and ACT. In English classes, our teachers write early, ask students to complete on-demand timed writings. That results in our students being better prepared for any assessment that they take where there is an on-demand timed writing, including both the SAT and the ACT. In addition to that, in mathematics, we implement SAT practice problems through Algebra Two, Precalculus, and Math Transition. So not only are we covering the content through the Common Core, but we're also affiliating our students with the format of the test questions. In addition to that preparation, utilizing Khan Academy, we have that as a recommended resource throughout all of our essential curriculum modules in high school mathematics. Khan Academy is now partnered with College Board. And so not only do they offer the support for students in the Algebra One and Geometry and Algebra Two, but they also offer a whole progression of activities for students actually preparing for SAT specifically. English teachers also can utilize the Khan Academy materials in their classrooms as it's aligned with the curriculum. In addition, we do have college prep and SAT prep courses in our high schools. So those courses are designed to help students prepare for the assessments that they would take for college entrance and other preparations for college. We also have, our English teachers are utilizing the PSAT results and using those to help students prepare for the SAT as appropriate.
Okay. With that, we may have taken any questions. If there are any questions, I think the good news for SAT, finally after many, many years, instead of it being an extra or something different than the curriculum, I think now it's aligned with the Common Core curriculum, which is very, very helpful to our staff. In the past, it's been prepared for HSA and by the way, we have SAT, which is slightly different, slightly covers different things, asks questions a different way. So I think now having these two a little bit more closely aligned is going to be a big help to our students and to our teachers.
Mrs. Fisher?
The college and SAT prep courses, are they given during the day or are they offered as the courses?
Those are offered during the school day.
I was teaching early after school and not making students want to.
Mr. Stauffer?
Has a restructure of the SAT made it easier for students to score? I mean, you don't get penalized now for wrong answers.
Correct.
Can you comment on that?
I, I, I can't. I have that more. She's our.
College reading specialist.
So she's very familiar with, she could probably comment on that.
So the question was, is it easier for students to score well on the redesigned SAT? And in actuality, the redesign is to ensure that the SAT is aligned with college and career readiness skills. So it has become an elevated exam in terms of really preparing, ensuring that students are prepared to perform at the college and career level. So I would say it's a more rigorous exam. It's less, I would say, abstract, so it's a little bit more straightforward. So it's a gain and a challenge, but you're right, students are not penalized for guessing. So if you're a guesser, I guess you have a chance of scoring better. But it's not designed so that students earn perfect scores. It's designed so that colleges and career programs who are recruiting students truly have an indicator as to how those students will perform in their programs.
I have a question regarding participation, looking at for twenty seventeen, the ACT, the nine-point-nine percent. And then the SAT, I think it's something like, I don't know, always about fifty-something or other. Is it an either or, or do you have any data to know that how many, what percentage of the kids take both? Are there any individuals that would be represented twice in those percentages?
I'm sure there are. We've not done that analysis and I actually thought that would be a good thing for us to start doing, because we do have a number of students that are participating. We have a higher number that are participating in ACT, so I can get that information.
Just, just curious. Thank you. Anyone else?
From the last question. Are we still, I don't know if you, I forget what they called them, but they were.
Talents or something?
They were specific subjects, like you could take an SAT test in American history, European history. Do they still have those?
Yes, they do.
Do many students take that?
No, we don't have high participation rates in the subject tests.
What did they call it?
Subject test.
Okay.
Yeah.
But did you take AP, where you have participation in those exams?
They do. And I think they probably, I haven't speak, I'll speak for just AP, probably I think students would prefer to take the AP because it's much more nationally recognized and I think colleges look at AP differently than they look at the subject test.
We didn't have AP, so we took the SAT test.
Okay. Thank you very much. We'll thank all the staff that was united and worked. There's just a couple of other comments. Tomorrow, I'll have the opportunity to present to the Board of Public Works. We'll be presenting on the request to the Board of Public Works for fourteen million eight-hundred-and-twelve thousand dollars for your four projects. Our educational, our urban educational campus, BOE component, formerly known as the hub, we're doing UIP, it's, we're going to have to get some names for this thing eventually. So we'll be requesting first year support for that and first year support for Shrewsbury Elementary School project. And then two group projects, the final phase of South Hagerstown High School with Shrewsbury Elementary. This past week, also had the opportunity to witness Brad Wilson, our local delegate, present a delicate citation to Aaron Brooks for his world championship in two thousand seventeen cadet wrestling tournament, freestyle tournament. That was very nice to be part of that. Yesterday, we had our unified tennis teams participate. We had from six of our high schools participate, which made it seem the kids out in court. Beautiful day, a little bit windy, but other than that, it was a beautiful day. Last week, or actually two weeks ago, right after our board meeting, I had the chance to go to showcase the bands. I just want to congratulate our band students and all the students for their efforts that they put on a wonderful show for people that were able to attend the showcase of bands. Just an amazing display of talent from these students. And last, I just want to mention our components of reading workshop, shared this with the board. We had over three-hundred participants this summer, primarily elementary teachers, some administrators, even a couple pair of professionals participated. Workshop that we tried to run last summer, we only had four participants this summer, we're three-hundred. We're in the first phase of kind of a follow-up to the workshop. Attended one day last week for fourth and fifth grade. We had over fifty staff members attend. This is after a long day of work. Yesterday, when I stopped by the workshop for second, third graders, second and third grade teachers, there was over seventy-five participants there. So I was really excited to go in the paint for an elementary. They had to move from the library to the cafeteria for the workshop. Tonight, I didn't get a chance out of the city, wherever, but we had kindergarten, first grade teachers there. As I understand, there were sixty people signed up. So I just want to thank our staff that have worked so hard on the components of reading. We've had lots of other workshops, man of science, social studies, other content areas. And our teachers really deserve a lot of credit for their participation in workshops this year, traveling, doing their cram, and better preparation for twenty-first century. And that's all I have for this.
Thank you, Dr. Michael. Any questions for Dr. Bishop before we move on? Next agenda, high noon, is personnel action. Dr. Bishop, excuse me.
Good evening, Dr. Michael, this is Williams, Mr. Stauffer, and board members. As discussed earlier in closed session, there are several staff changes for your review. This time, I ask for your approval of today's personnel actions.
Thank you. Is there a question?
Salute.
Thank you, Mr. Stauffer. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions for Dr. Bishop? Discussion? All those in favor of personnel action as discussed earlier in closed session? Regan Adams, match carries, thank Dr. Bishop.
Thank you.
Right, that brings us to reports of political committees.
The curriculum instruction committee will meet on Tuesday, October twenty-fourth, at ten-thirty AM in the board conference room.
Finance committee will meet on November fourteenth, at eight AM in the finance conference room.
Thank you. Mr. Guesford?
Facilities will be meeting November the seventh, and I believe that's the date correct. We've been bouncing that around a little bit, but it'll be in the morning, about eight-thirty.
Eight-thirty-ish?
Eight-thirty.
All right. Mrs. Fisher?
Policy committee met October the tenth. Our main topic of discussion, just policy EF EA, entitled the Child Nutrition Program. We had six guests at the meeting, five concerned citizens and our student board member attended also. Mr. Prue provided us with some detailed background, including the charge from the US Department of Agriculture, which is requiring the changes to our existing policy. We also are currently getting some definitions added to the policy and some more detail is being added. It is tentatively scheduled for a second read on our November seventh business meeting. We also, of course, discussed the three policy matters that were voted on earlier this evening. And we have a tentative meeting scheduled for October thirty-first at nine-fifteen, if it is needed. I'll have to watch board docs to see if it's a go or not.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Mr. Rydner?
Yes, HR tentatively has meetings set for October thirty-first. I think it's eight-forty-five, but I'm not certain about that. Possibility of talking a little bit about where we are as far as our staff is concerned, how we fill or still need to fill certain positions.
Thank you.
Ms. Williams, I will make a correction. We did change that time from one o'clock. Staff asked to move it to one PM, same day. Instead of eight-thirty, it's now one o'clock.
So it's November seventh at one. Under Ms. Lannis' business, consideration of future agenda items. What was the future agenda items that was part of your packet? On November seventh, we'll be looking at this year's student enrollment and free and reduced meal eligibility rates. And we will have an update for human resources on the new hires and the fine things that happened at the New Teacher Academy this year. On November twenty-first, we talked about the mathematics textbook. End of December fifth, diversity ad hoc committee update. And in January, we'll have an update on the William Bridge Planetarium. And I think I'll stop there. I'd like to remind my colleagues that we have a work session scheduled for November seventh, from two to three. And we have confirmation now of our joint meeting with our delegation to talk about our legislative program for this year. That date is December fifth and the place is Crystal Walden at Hager Hall. And if you're going to be there for the discussion of the UIP.
UIP is nine-thirty.
Nine-thirty.
Legislative at ten.
And legislative at ten. If you have any suggestions for future agenda items, please let me know, or Mr. Stauffer, or Superintendent Michael. And that brings us to board members. Would you like to start that?
I have two things. One, I was also at the county's unified tennis match yesterday. I've got to see my grandson play his last match, because he's a senior at South High. Very impressed with all of the young people that were there. And the other is, I attended the Washington County Public Schools Education Foundation meeting on Wednesday, October eleventh, and I was very impressed with the great work that they are doing.
Nothing for me?
Mr. Stauffer?
Attended the Maryland Association of Boards of Education Conference in Ocean City and for a new board member like myself, it was very nice to meet fellow board members from throughout the state and listen to their concerns and it's certainly quite a learning experience.
Thank you. Mr. Guesford?
Yes, thank you. I understand this is National Bus Safety Week, so I'd like to thank all of our bus drivers and their aides that are out diligently early mornings, late evenings, making sure that our students get safely to home and to school. And during their outings to the school sports events, we want to thank all them for all the hard work that they do. So congratulations and continued success to all of our bus drivers.
Mrs. Fisher?
I have nothing to say.
Mr. Rydner? I will stop at nothing. And so our meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.